Grace United Methodist Church is going to lead us in our invocation.
Could you please pray with me? Almighty God, we've come before you this day giving you thanks for your ever-abiding presence with us. We ask that you would fill this space with your Spirit and may your Spirit grant those gathered here with your wisdom. Give them your guidance as they seek to make decisions that will enhance the lives of all the residents of Cape Girardeau. Give them courage to make difficult decisions. Bless each elected official here tonight. Watch over this meeting with your presence. Bless the first responders in our community and keep them safe as they respond to the needs of our community. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Show me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. We have no action tonight in the study session, but we do have two presentations, the first of which is a hangar development update. Ms. Molly?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. This evening I'd like to give you an update on the regional airport's hangar development. I'd also like to acknowledge that we have our Airport Board Chairman, Joe Hobbs, Joe Zaro, Airport Board Member, and of course Bruce Lloyd, our Airport Manager here this evening as well. How many of you remember late last May on a sweltering day, we went out to the airport and took a tour of the facilities? And I think at that time you all saw firsthand the condition that some of our facilities are in at the airport. In response to that, last summer, we issued a request for expression of interest to the private sector developers and contractors to see if there was any interest out there in helping improve our facilities at the airport. We issued that proposal or that request last July. We received two proposals in response to that. However, one failed to meet the deadline and was disqualified for that. The viable proposal was submitted by Pensil Construction Company. It included three-phase approach to revitalizing some of the facilities at the airport. And staff has been in ongoing discussions with Pensil since last summer to talk about how to best approach some of those improvements. And for the first phase of those improvements, we've talked about tackling the air vac hangars. And for those of you who need a refresher, when you come into the airport, you pass Cape Cocteers, it's that long white building that parallels Limbaugh Drive. That is a existing wood pole barn structure. Only six of the 18 doors are operable right now, so other parts of the building are near collapse. We took you in it last May. I'm sure you all-
Some of us were afraid to stay in it.
Yes. And it has just been an ongoing maintenance issue, and quite frankly, an eyesore. That's the first thing people see when they pull into the airport, and it's not really the face that we would like to present for the regional airport. Pensil has proposed replacing those existing 18 hangars with 26 new steel hangars. And they can achieve that in essentially the exact same footprint that we have now, and they can do that by having this nested hangar configuration, which you can see on the screen here. So we'd still have a 42-foot wide opening, would easily accommodate most of the single-engine aircraft that we have at the airport now, and again, would fit essentially the same footprint that we have out there currently. The basic premise of our agreement with Pensil, the overarching goal all along is to provide the highest-quality facility that we can with the littlest or no subsidy from the city. So what we've agreed to do is enter into a 40-year ground lease with Pensil. That way, the city maintains ownership of the ground underneath that is necessary to maintain our grant assurances with the state and federal agencies that funds other improvements at the airport. Phil, Pensil will create a development entity, CRA Development LLC is the name that he's thrown around, that will construct the hangars. They will then either sell the hangar space or lease it to aircraft owners, and they will be responsible for the maintenance and management of those hangars for the term of that lease. At the end of the 40 years, the facilities would revert to the city unless we reach another deal throughout that 40-year period. The next step, before we get into all of the legal agreements with the CRA Development LLC, we would like to send a letter out to all of the aircraft owners, either that are currently at the airport or that have expressed interest in hangering a plane at the airport, to gauge their interest in whether or not they'd like to purchase one of these units. We're currently looking at offering these for in the mid $50,000 range. Some of that is still to be finalized, but that's a very affordable. In comparison, the T-hangers that the city built a few years ago averaged about $77,000 a unit. So Phil Pensil is able to do this for considerably less, which is a great attractant to those who might be interested in purchasing a unit. But we want to make sure that interest is out there before we enter into all of these agreements and whatnot. So we would like to send out these letters, the first 26 questionnaires that we receive back expressing an interest in purchase date timestamp, and that would hold that individual's position in selecting their preferred hangar unit. Some people prefer to be on the end, the middle, where their buddies are, whatnot. So depending on the response that we get, and we're optimistic that there is quite a bit of interest out here to do that, we would like to make a decision on or before March 1st as to whether or not to proceed. We're hopeful that as soon as we send the letters out, work gets out, that we'll start to get a response pretty soon, and then we can put all the agreements in place, and then we could authorize Phil to proceed with the demolition of those old hangars and do the foundation and slab before the airshow in May, which would also free up some space out at the airport for static displays and things like that as well. If we don't receive the interest that we think we're going to receive, we may not have a project, and then we'll have to go back to the drawing board and reassess where we're at. Also, if we receive an overwhelming response to the letter, and we have more than 26 people who are interested in purchasing a hangar, we may consider constructing additional T-hangers where we, in the same vicinity where we constructed, as I said, about four or five years ago. Those will be more expensive due to some site and drainage considerations, and again, our estimate for those is probably closer to what the city paid a few years ago, $78,000-80,000 range. And also, if this partnership experience works well, then we might also consider doing the corporate hangars, which is the set of three hangars that sits across from Cape Aviation, where currently only one of the three doors is operable. So again, another facility need that we have at the airport. The benefits to the city of this arrangement, the airport gets desperately needed new hangars without the city spending any funds. We retain ownership of the ground underneath. That maintains our grant assurances. It allows any available city funding to go towards areas that benefit more of the greater good, like the terminal, the air traffic control tower, or possibly future R facilities out at the airport. Also, the more hangars we have at the airport, the more planes and the more fuel sales that we will see from that as well. Also, another advantage is the airport staff will not have to manage these 26 hangars. That will be the responsibility of the development entity. So that's where we are. There's still a lot of little details that we have to work through. We're waiting for a little bit of feedback from the FAA, but otherwise, we wanted to make you aware, because as soon as we get that feedback, we would like to proceed with sending those letters out and gauging that interest so we can move forward as quickly as possible. Are there any questions?
If after May, say we go ahead and enter into an agreement after the airshow, what is his timeframe? What is Mr. Pensil's timeframe in finished project?
He'll be erecting those structures immediately after the airshow and hopefully have them completed before the end of summer.
Before the end of summer? How many planes do we currently have in the Hangar 71?
Total or single-engine?
Just total. Roughly a dozen? Okay. I mean, do we, I mean, am I safe to assume that most of those single-engine would-
We are strongly encouraging any single-engine aircraft in Hangar 71 to consider this option or other systems that might open up. You know, we might have someone in one of the older T-hangers that would like to opt into purchasing one of these new hangars. That might open up space for someone in Hangar 71. However, Hangar 71, we'd like to, we'd like to encourage all the single-engine aircraft to vacate that hangar one so that we have it for larger airplanes. And also, as we all know, if we ever have a prospect come along, we will have to find the space for all of those planes. In the letter that we send out to aircraft owners, we are specifically mentioning anyone with a plane in Hangar 71 should consider this. We've also, will go so far as to say, you know, if you opt to stay, we will increase your lease rate considerably effective September 1st.
Right.
So another little encouragement.
Thank you.
What's the take, as far as the Airport Board? What's your take? I'd like to know your take on this and what you feel like the demand is for a building with 26 hangars? Don't everybody speak at once.
As a pilot mayor, I suspect there is verbal demand as to my take on the proposal. Are you asking for my take, Larry?
Well, I-
We've never seen you ask for-
Everybody knows that the condition of the T-hangers is something that we have got to address, and I think this is a great way with a public-private partnership to get that done. And it's not building an inferior-quality building. It's a steel building. It's not, you know, made out of wood. It's something that's quality that will last for years, and there's just a great need for it. And if we do have somebody interested in the old Commander Hangar, which is now called Hangar 71, and we sell that, and we got to find a place to put all those planes in there. We got to have a quality place to store.
At first glance, Mayor, the question that I would have is, would it be ideal to revert towards a solution that accommodates here all of the airplane versus sites? So, you know, on that, I would ask the question, obviously, I don't represent the Airport Board, and I'm solid on people. I would ask the question, how many airplanes do we have? Could that layout that was presented be altered visually to accommodate those planes? Because what will we do with those planes if the council decides to repurpose?
How about the washing planes?
Yes. What would we do with the twin-engine, you know, there's probably barons in there, I don't know what else.
How many, how many larger planes are there in there?
Currently, there's between four and five twin-in and larger planes.
Okay.
Would those, forgive me, I don't know the exact specs, but could those four to five, if something was done with the corporate hangars, that could be a fix for those four to five could make? If you tore down, not getting crazy here, but if you tore down corporate hangars, rebuilt them, and then those four to five could potentially use the corporate hangars, correct? Also, or in addition to?
Might follow them in there, but I'd-
All right.
And then you got, you know, if somebody takes over Commander for whatever reason, there really is not, that's going to leave a need for another large hangar even if you replace the corporate hangar.
And I guess that's my, that's my concern. You know, Mayor Fox and I sit in on the magnet meeting, and we hear, you know, John Manor talk about there is levels of interest from time to time. And so is it the best time to talk about housing those four to five leather aircraft? I definitely think we need to have some plans on the table.
Well, I think part of the goal is to not only have four or five of those leather aircraft, but get the little ones out of the way.
Yeah. You're right, single-engine now, yeah.
So that we can put more of those twin-engines in there because of fuel sales and the-
And I think we've always, I think we've always felt like if someone purchases the Hangar 71, then that's one of the potential uses for the proceeds would be to look at what is the right market response to doing that. Certainly, they do use a lot of fuel, and that's nice, and so certainly, we would analyze that, I believe, and look at that as a possible use of that revenue source.
To Rob's point, we've lost to that.
Yeah.
And I, and I'm-
To be ready to go.
Considering when we took a tour, that the air vac and the corporate hangars are in disrepair and not even being used, and considering we're putting a square peg in a round hole with using Commander for what we're, or 71 for what we are, we need to really take a look at being able to come up with something to not only take care of the single-engine, but these larger aircraft. And-
Yeah, I think, I agree with that, but I think, you know, we also, you know, it's hard to try to tackle everything all at once, to, you know, to ask somebody to invest and make investment in, you know, in a public private. It's kind of what they have a, you know, what they have ability to pre-fund and do. And so I think they had to break, I think they had that discussion about what were all the needs, but then they had to break it down to some smaller chunks to address. And I won't speak for you, but-
Actually, it really came down to logistics. It would be easier to move the single-engine aircraft into new T-hangers than it would be to tear down the corporate hangars and try to accommodate those individuals. So it was, we had a very lengthy discussion about what was the best thing to start with, and we landed on the T-hangers. And again, this-
It's further along than we've been since I've been here, so, I mean, it's good, but I'm still cognizant that-
We recognize that there are a lot of needs, and so this is the first step in addressing those needs, and I think if this is successful, then the next step would be to look at replacing the corporate hangars. And then if we're ever fortunate enough to have a prospect come along for Hangar 71, then I think, as Mr. Meyer stated, we would look at how to best utilize the proceeds from that to fund additional improvements.
The current corporate hangar's hangar holds for three larger aircraft to care about.
You know, basically, they would hold three larger aircraft or several smaller planes. I think that if they're going to be rebuilt, we wouldn't build them like they are now. We'd make them a little bit deeper. I mean, I'd have to bring some out, use some of the important part of that ramp. If you go back so far, if you had fires, both distance here to the east, the guy in just, all depending on, it would probably be built for this. I mean, I'd be a walk, I don't know. Right now, there's three separate facilities. It could be built for this, three doors, maybe four. I don't know. I don't, I haven't really talked to Phil about part of it.
Well, in any event, it's, it's great progress in my mind. We're considering replacing the T-hangers that are there, because that's a, not only is it an eyesore, but we've got to have place for people to store their smaller planes, and that's big. It's a step in the right direction, and I think it's something we need to consider seriously.
If I spend $50,000 on a space for an airplane, are there recurring costs in the future for that space, such as utilities or maintenance of the building?
The owners would be responsible for their share of electricity and any maintenance cost. That was really up to Phil's entity to determine what those costs are. It is possible, being a condo, that they may be assessed, have a special assessment, you know, in 15, 20 years for a new roof or something like that. But, but again, that would all be left up to the entity to manage and maintain.
I would like there might be a need for a pilots' association as opposed to a homeowner's association to manage the future assessments as opposed to letting a corporate entity decide 10 years down the road that I'm going to increase your monthly fees by an exorbitant amount of money. Not that Pensil will, but I'm just saying, protection for the plane owners.
All of, all of that is, we are trying to address in our agreement with the entity. Also, some of the feedback I mentioned from the FAA we're waiting for has to do with that condo association and how that is managed. So I think we will, we will be sure to address all of those concerns before we find on the dotted line, so to speak.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody?
This is the latest in a, in a long series of public-private partnerships that really, we think, stretch taxpayer investment in a way that helps taxpayers. And so I applaud Molly and her staff's work with the airport staff also for their work with Pensil to work to this point, because it was a lot of negotiations, a lot of talk to get to that point, and then we will eventually, before we actually do something, it'll come back to you as well. So I think, I think it's a great, and I want to recognize Molly for her work in, in working through this to get us to this point.
I'd just like to keep the Airport Board involved in this, and so they've got input. I mean, they know a lot of the pilots and the people down there at the airport and can give us some valuable insight as to what direction we need to go, not only with this project, but any future project.
I know one question that the Airport Advisory Board would have would be a comparison in cost if the city built a hangar and operated themselves. I know that they would have to pay some wage, a little bit put in, but I think knowing that, definitely going to be Airport Advisory Board. The second thing I would like to point out is my understanding that pilots, or sorry, the airplane owners, wouldn't really own the hangars. They would just be paying them a favor. So maybe there's a difference between paying 40 years of rent in advance.
Right.
Actually, we are looking at doing a condominium map where a pilot would receive a deed to the hangar space. So it would be a hangar-owned space that could be sold or sublet or whatnot.
What happens after the?
If another agreement is not reached before the end of the 40 years, the facility would revert to the city, and we would take over management.
So we would only have a recorded legal for the rest of the lease period?
Yes.
That wouldn't mean the real property would be afforded.
It would be a 40-year ownership agreement, yes.
Where it would have to be given back. So I mean, I'm trying to make sure that we understand-
Which is how every other ground lease works at the airport and with our other hangar facilities as well. They all revert, have a provision where they revert to the city.
Okay, but to be clear, it would in effect be-
You can interpret it that way.
You could, you could word it that way in your mind.
So that's a different perception.
But I just want to make sure that the, you know, the Airport Board is there as an advisory board, and you all see the issues and the problems down there a lot more than most of us on the council. So I want you to be apprised of how this goes, and want your input in this whole process. Okay? Any other questions or comments about this? A great, great project. Just one more thing that, that will put our airport on the map, having, you know, it's really an exciting time. We get to 9,200 boarding last year, and now we've got an extra flight per day and a different venue for those flights, so it looks very promising. We're excited for the future of the airport. Good. Next presentation is the capital improvement program for fiscal 2019 to 2024. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Well, tis the season again. We are looking at our large-scale capital projects. I'm going to get into a little bit here, but I don't want to be remiss. I want to acknowledge a couple people quickly. Beth Little, normally around the holiday seasons, everybody's open, work kind of dies down, projects slow down a little bit, but she is the one that really helps coordinate a lot of this information. She's the one that actually compiles the documents. She's the one that actually binds them and prints them and makes sure that you guys have a copy in advance. So I want to make sure that I give her recognition. Also, Victor Brownless, our Assistant Finance Director, he's been very helpful this year in participating in a lot of the meetings, being that voice of fiscal reality when we're talking about certain projects and where we might be able to leverage. So definitely don't want to miss out on that. So here's a quick overview about what I'll talk about today. On the left is just a quick overview of the document that you have with the introduction, the purpose, the maps that we provide, and then the line items of different projects. But my presentation will focus on, one, the purpose. I'll get into the three different project types that we categorize everything in. Then I'll talk about some upcoming projects that we have, some completed projects, and then I'll get into some takeaways and next steps. So the purpose, why, why now? Why are we doing this? One is required by the city charter. Article 6.04 requires that the city manager present a draft capital improvement plan to city council for their interpretation, their input, and the council then has 90 days in which they have to adopt it. They have to adopt it 90 days before the beginning of the fiscal year. So that's one reason. But the main three reasons that we do it is, one, it's a planning document. We're not looking at how do we crutch by next year and what resources will we need? We're talking about five years out. What are our long-term needs? How are we going to plan for them? And how are we going to pay for them? It's also a communication document. Hopefully, this document is not overly intimidating. It's not overly thick. I'm used to dealing with budget documents that are 600 pages, and people ask me, well, what's the city doing? And I'm like, well, reference the budget document. We have a very thin, very large-numbered capital projects document that we can refer people to, or we can reference if people ask you, what are you investing in as far as our capital infrastructure needs? So hopefully, it serves that purpose. And then it's a financial document. Again, it's matching our needs with fiscal realities. And when we have very basic, very important needs, we need to make sure that we can be able to fund them. So these are the three different categories that we have. We categorize everything under transportation, environment, or capital assets. For these larger budget number projects, we put a threshold of $50,000. So we will bring to you some other items come budget time when we talk about operational budget that are capital projects, but they don't meet that threshold, with the exception of IT and our fleet. And because we're a community that needs to leverage a lot of different resources to be able to provide for our capital infrastructure, these are some of the resources that we're leveraging. Again, I can't stress enough, this community is very, very dependent on sales tax. We have, if you look at this list quickly, we have sales tax for our water, our sewer, our transportation front is a half percent sales tax. We also have our parks and recreation sales tax, which we were very fortunate in passing recently, and our fire sales tax, which takes up a good number of the, of the resources that you see there. We also have various loans and grants that we get from federal and state agencies. We have our MFT, motor fuel tax that we get from the state, and then we have our casino revenue, and then our enterprise funds, which are our fee-based operations that we do. So this chart was actually a lot more scary to staff last year, because we had a very pending date with our parks and recreation stormwater tax, and we had other ones hitting too. So what once was a red arrow is now a green arrow. So what once was a red arrow is now a green arrow. So we were very fortunate to have that pass. We're good now until 2033. But we do have some that are coming up. We have our sales tax for our sewer, and we also have our TTF, which will expire at the end of 2020. So it's very important and incumbent upon us to where we can help educate the public as far as what type of resources these sales taxes or these taxes provide for our community. And if it were not to be renewed, what would they experience if it wasn't?
And just to clarify on that, when we passed the new wastewater treatment plant, we hit actually a flip on sewer water at some point. And so the actual part that is expiring at the end of 2019 is, will be water. That is the part of that. So it's a little confusing because it was one, but then we, the water was getting closer to being done. So when we flipped it, when we did the sewer tax, I don't know if that makes any sense or not, just take my word for it.
And in the introduction of the document, we actually do provide detail if you want to know what is this tax, what the percentage is. We do provide detail for each one. So reference that, and if you have any other questions, please get with us, and we can help elaborate. So this is the more fun part I get to have with this presentation is all the great things that we accomplished for this year. I've gotten a lot of compliments on Lexington Road. I know others have echoed that. But this was about a half a mile stretch of two-inch overlay from Cape Rock to Sherwood. We improved sidewalks to the north. We also improved some driveways where we had to cut in there. We realigned some manholes. And we also accommodated for pedestrian traffic, adding the char rows, which is that bicycle with the arrow that you see, and additional crosswalks. And stormwater drainage improvements, this is something that Stan's working with right now. This is the Margaret Janet drainage improvement. Janet's running left to right, Margaret's running up and down. We actually put 1,200 linear feet of stormwater pipe and 1,300 linear feet of box culvert with this project. The map to your right is slightly, it was a preliminary design. The road intersecting just above there is Leroy. I think above Margaret, we stopped at Leroy with the box culvert, but we actually went underneath the road on Margaret there. And then on Janet, we were able to leverage the right-of-way, putting the storm drain improvements in. And then you'll see on the left-hand side of the map, it kind of jags in between neighborhoods. We had to go between side yards and backyards to make our progress up to Leroy. And that's the picture you see is our crews being able to navigate that. So they're doing a great job out there, and that's been a needed improvement, and that's something we've heard from the public, is this is a big need for us, and we'd love to see this improvement. We also have our Bowton Drive water main extension. This is from County Road 620 on Bowton Road all the way up to an Amarin Substation that's on the right-hand side of the road. This was a 14-inch main that was installed. It's replacing a six-inch main, so it's greatly expanding our capacity. And our Sloan Creek Bridge. I know that it was inconvenient to have that bridge out. We were able to open up Main Street Bridge temporarily, and we did hear about that a little bit, but this was a great improvement. We actually replaced the entire superstructure. We did slope stabilization, which was a sinking slope, and we were monitoring it. We had our survey crew go out there weekly at times just to make sure it wasn't dropping too much where it would cause a public hazard. But we were able to stabilize the banks, we replaced the superstructure, and we actually added a five-foot crosswalk on the east side of the superstructure, which is closest to the river. Not crosswalk, but sidewalk. And our West End, the picture to your left, we have our city manager, we have our Assistant Public Works Director, Casey Brunkie, and then our contractor, Bowen, that's Chris Burek there. This was a public meeting that we held back in September. It was very well attended, and everybody seemed to come at one time. So we were hit all at once. So I was very fortunate. We had a lot of different staff there to be able to help answer questions. And it's affecting their properties, it's affecting their neighborhoods. They had a great interest in how does this change the dynamic of my front yard in relation to how far it is from the street? There was a lot of curiosity, and luckily, we were able to answer a lot of those questions. We're working on final design right now. This was, it's going to be, it's 4,690 linear feet of street improvement, so almost a mile. So it's from Rose to Bertling. And there's a good number of houses that are impacted, but they're going to be good improvements. We're adding sidewalks on the north side of it, and we're also trying to provide some off-street parking. That way, we're not monopolizing road as people need that parking. Our Independence Corridor. So with all of the improvements that we've seen, all of the commercial investment with the Dogwood Social Club, the expansion of all of these, Independence has been increasingly seen a lot more activity, and this is an area that's just primed for studying, planning, and investing for the future. And that's something that was vetted in TTF-5. It's been recognized in the private market as far as an area they'd like to see improve. So we have been working on a study now. We did a traffic study. We had a meeting last Friday with our contractor that provided us feedback from our public comment. And we are looking to going into final design once we're able to address some of those comments, incorporate what we've heard from business owners, what we've heard from the public, and what we think is economically feasible given our budget. Now, this is Stan's toy, and I tried to embed a video, but the technology is beyond me. Either that or we just need a new version of PowerPoint. But if you go to YouTube and you look up pothole patching truck, it'll show you quick videos of it in action, and it is pretty impressive. I'm sure Stan will show you too with his actual unit. But it has what I call a boom arm that extends out, and it will, through pressurized air, has a little hose that will actually clean out the pothole. It'll blow all the debris out, and then it'll actually shoot out the composite material in that hole, and they can move it side to side or up and back and just completely cover that area to where the driver doesn't even have to get out. And I actually worked in the Public Works Department in college over the summers, and on good days, I'd be mowing the cemetery. On bad days, I'd be behind a pothole truck, shoveling the material out and then heating it up. And those were hot days. So I'm glad that we're providing this for our staff. And this was a big boon not only to my department, Development Services, but also to any other department that touches planning review. This is Fire Department, our Public Works Department, the County Health Department, our design professionals, our contractors. This is us going to 21st century. So you can see, this is Todd Richburg, our plan reviewer. You can see him on to the left there. This is how we typically review plans prior to our implementation. It's just not that efficient. You can see in there in his silo, he's making marks and making comments on that plan, but he then has to compile those with all those other departments and other agencies that I just mentioned, and then pass those on to contractors and to design professionals. Him on the right, right now, he's in real-time talking to a design professional about comments he's made, and if he has additional comments, he can make those, they'll be notified immediately, and they can interact with that same document. This is Diana Barnes. This is another efficiency that we have with that. So our filing system on the left, you can see, once we receive all these paper documents and these plans, and plans are large, we need a large area to be able to compile them. So we get our comments from Public Works, we get our comments from engineering, we get our comments from County Health. We have to put them all together at once. Now, the server space that that takes up is so miniscule compared to our large paper documents. So I greatly appreciate city council investment, city manager recognition of the need, and just thank you very much for that. And then our skate park that opened up in November, and every time I've gone by it, during the daytime anyway, I've seen people out there.
I've seen people out there in the rain.
Oh, yeah?
I mean, it can be pouring down rain, and they're out there on their skateboards.
So this was actually a public-private partnership. There was public donations that helped fund some of this park. I spoke to Chris Hudson, who was kind of a champion in the private sector of getting donations for the park and keeping it, hurting it in our minds that that's a need out in the community. He told me after it opened up in front of his store, he works at Art Van, he was driving into his parking lot, and he saw some kids in the parking lot out there skateboarding. So he pulled up to them and signaled over to them, and the kids kind of had that look like, oh, he's going to yell at me for skateboarding in this parking lot. So he goes, hey, do you know that the city actually opened up a new skateboard park? And they were surprised. They were like, no way, really? And he was like, yeah, it's over by the arena park. And they thanked him and said they had to check it out. So it's a need from our youth in our community, so I'm glad that we have it. We provide maps in the document. The maps we enumerate align with the line item projects that you see, so hopefully, that's helpful. If there are things within the document you think maybe you could present this differently or be helpful if you showed it a certain way, please let us know because we're always open to changing it. We want to make sure it's helpful for you guys, too. One thing, this is the transportation map. You also have the environmental map. You see that the airport down there is pretty lit up with projects. There's quite a few projects planned out there. So recognize those under the transportation section. And then this is the environmental section, a little more difficult to show like length of project, but if you have any other questions on any of those, please feel free to get with us. A quick overview of the summary, we have program just north of $7 million. Program means we recognize the need and we know where funding is available for it. Contingent is we've recognized the need, but we don't necessarily have a funding source for it now. And I always give the disclaimer that the contingent column is somewhat inflated because we try to think about things and create different ways in which we could solve a problem. So we may be redundant in that column. An example would be City Hall, we have things like replacing our HVAC system, our boiler system. If we completely build new or renovated, those might not be as necessary. Here are just pie graphs of the two funds. We have facilities there, you see it at 36%. Last year was at 14%. Part of that reason is we have our annex, we have the courthouse, we also have the youth ball field complex and airport terminals in there. So they're represented in that. So overall, we've continued with the path that council has given us. We've continued with the progression in which the feedback we've received. There's not too much new. We obtained, again, input from all our departments. We've headed it back to the city management. They've reviewed it, and now we're looking for your feedback. For transportation, again, we've continued with the same trajectory with the TTF-5. We weren't looking at adding too many new roads. We're taking the feedback from council as in we're maintaining our current transportation infrastructure. The only new road that was proposed was the extension of Fountain Street from William Street to Independence, and that'll be the last project that we do with TTF-5. We've also continued on with our neighborhood street repairs. We hear a lot of feedback that's great with these main artillery roads, but what are you doing on our side roads and our roads in our neighborhood? So we have 700,000 in asphalt overlay, we have 850,000 in our concrete street repair program. And then we still have our significant TTF-5 projects, our West End Boulevard from Rose to Bertling. We're also doing our Independence implementation of the recommendations from our design. That'll be from Gordonville to Carruthers. And then our Sprig Street, that's from Broadway to William. And our Main Street, that'd be from Roberts to Cape Rock. And then Fountain, again, will be the last project in there. In environment, we have some long-term studies that we've done, and our Public Works Department and our Engineering Division takes guidance from those studies and schedules them accordingly in our CIP. So we have projects such as Good Hope Drainage Phase Two. We also have our Kappa Hove Pond renovation. And then in wastewater, we have our grit pump replacement, as well as our sewer system inflow and infiltration program, Phase Two. And then again, in water, we have our Gordonville Pump Station, and then Plant One Filter Rehab and R rating. We have six filters out there that need addressed. In IT, luckily, we continue to be in good shape in IT. We have the major project of our radio interoperability. Again, that provides seamless communication between not only our agencies, but also state and federal agencies. That's programmed over the next three years. Up and coming is Phase Two A and Two B, and then we're going to improve some of our data backup storage. And the facilities, I touched on this, but we have our courthouse renovation, we also have the annex, and then we have some proposed Riverfront Heritage Museum upgrades. This is more ADA accessibility. And then I hit on this last year, but City Hall, again, remains one of those unfunded needs, but we have been making steps since I presented last year, as in we did produce a space needs assessment that we're not placing now. So takeaways, again, we've been very fortunate. We were able to pass the fire sales tax, the TTF-5 passed, PRS-2 just passed. There's still work to go. We have our capital improvement sales tax still coming up at the end of 2019, and then we'll be looking at different TTF-6 projects that we'll pitch to the public, and they'll help vet and provide us feedback and what they'd like to see. We are just looking at feedback from you. Again, we're not looking for immediate feedback tonight. You'll have a council study session at your next meeting where you can openly discuss some of your priorities, if you've gotten with us, about any questions you may have. And then we'll be holding a public hearing and then hopefully adopting on the first meeting in March, but if not, we can pass it at the second meeting. Any questions at this time?
Yeah, I'll notice that there were a lot of unfunded capital projects there that, and I assume as you go through this, just say the transportation part, there were some as a possible funding source would be TTF-6. If those projects are included as part of TTF-6, and that passes, then those changes from unfunded to funded, is that not correct?
They would.
Those projects would go from the unfunded part to the funded?
And again, we would want, we typically form TTF committees that help us really narrow down which projects that the public would like to see, but yes.
Okay.
As that committee talks and council says, yeah, that's the list, then two things will happen. Some of them will become TTF-6, that will be it. Some of them that may have been potentially TTF-6 that didn't make lists, then they go into future.
Right. Well, that's the way it's worked in the past, and it's worked pretty well. There are a lot of projects that, you know, might be 10 years down the road because they're not priorities to the public. So that's something that may change. But it is a very complete list, and it talks about a lot of different things. Priority-wise, you know, one thing we want to look at as a council is looking at some of these projects and then looking at the projected date of some of those projects. We may want to reprioritize some of those. There are, you know, a lot of them on here, for example, the T-hangers are listed as, you know, $500,000 expense out of the general fund. If we do a private partner relationship, that would not be part of that. Anybody else have any comments about what you've seen as far as the draft? Anybody else have any comments about what you've seen as far as the draft? Yet I spent the other night looking at this and there are, there's a lot, it's all inclusive. There's a lot of things in here. Uh, the annex and common pleas, you know, the, the cost to, to do things in there to upgrade those with elevators and electrical and HVAC and whatnot is, uh, $3.6 million for both buildings. It's considerable. And, uh, there are a lot of things in here that, that we will talk about when it comes to that study session to look at and find ways to, uh, maybe alternative ways to get some of this stuff done. But it's a pretty good list. Thank you, Alex. Any, anybody got any questions or comments?
Yeah, this is my, uh, obviously my first time being presented one. I mean, I saw last year's, but, um, I mean, I looked over it and honestly, I didn't understand it because I was so new, to be, to be honest. But
It's usually the response.
Yeah, I have a much better understanding now and, um, you know, thank you to you and your staff and everybody else that puts this together because it seems like a, a very large undertaking and, um, so a lot of information. Thank you.
The only thing I would add is that, you know, whenever we're meeting, whenever we as a council are meeting with residents and we're talking about these different projects that are going on, you know, getting an idea of what's really important to them is, is gonna help us in determining which direction. Last year, I, I was gonna say argued, I didn't argue, but I really pushed for a piece of Lexington to get put on to the, to, to this, uh, the capital improvement plan, just because it was important to, to not only people in my ward, but people who travel that, that street. So I, I would just urge that and, and I'd also kudos to you in, in keeping this living document going forward each year. I know it's a lot of work and thank you for that. And I do want to see the video of our puddle truck working.
YouTube. Yeah. Just, uh, you, one of the completed projects or really it's in process now, the, the, the Janet Margaret.
Janet drain.
I mean, I drive that and I, uh, Mayor, I know you do a lot. Uh, it's much needed and I know that people appreciate the work that's going on there.
Well, I walked down there with my grandson a couple of weeks ago when they had some of the big equipment down there and he was impressed with how deep the hole was and how big the equipment was. And it's, I have heard from some of the residents there and, and it has been a big inconvenience to them a number of ways, uh, you know, from having their yards torn up to the street torn up to not being liable to get access and, and, uh, but they are very thankful that it's being done and they know that a lot of goods are gonna come out of this in the end. So they won't have as much water standing in their yards and, and, uh, I don't think there was too many that had water getting in their houses anymore, but there were, there were, there's a lot of water everywhere when it rained a lot. And a lot of that water now is gonna be
Got a place to go.
Got a place to go. So that's great.
I actually had somebody call me after one of the big rains and said that just the work that had been done so far had helped their, their situation. And that's, that, that's great. I didn't normally hear that, you know, partway through.
But thanks, Alex. Great.
Yes, great.
Excellent.
And I'm glad to see, uh, people here this evening from the museum and whatnot because I know you're interested in, in, uh, what's gonna happen with the annex and common pleas and whatnot. And hopefully we can come up with a, a great solution and you'll be here when we, our study session, when we talk about all this stuff and have a lot more discussion about what goes on and, and, uh, there is a meeting, uh, in the future. We're trying to get scheduled with the museum, the historical society and the university and the city to, uh, to look at possible alternatives, alternative uses for those buildings because they're iconic and we want to keep them. So thank you for being here. Anybody else? Any comments? If not, we'll go right into communication reports. Any council members have anything to bring up?
Since this is kind of pertinent to the CIP, but I wanted to mention it to all of council. I had met, uh, with Lori Everett, who owns, uh, Annie Laurie's and, uh, and Handy House and Chris's Stark,
Right.
who is bringing, um, Mary Jane's bourbon. And, and I know Councilman Bowen had worked, tried to work and, uh, get some things that, um, in motion on some crosswalk areas in, in certain parts of Broadway that are in high traffic area that are not at the stop, uh, stoplights. And, and so I, I, I took some time and drove up and down and kinda, uh, was looking at some areas and I, I'd really, I'd really liked for us, and I talked to Marla with Old Town Cape and kinda got her feedback on some things. I, I really think that there probably are some, some areas that we need to do some research on Broadway about slowing down traffic, uh, and, and potentially yielding to pedestrians as, as they're, as they're crossing. We've got some serious tra, I mean, and we're getting more. And our intent in revitalization and, and propping up downtown is to get more people out and about. And the more we have down there, the more people we've got walking.
Well, I dare say most people don't drive the speed limit that
No. No, it's ridiculous. Uh, and having just come, and actually Alex put a, um, a picture of a crosswalk that's on Lexington. And having come, just come myself from, uh, Colorado, you know, there, there are some ways to be able to, uh, get people to slow down with some, some signage and, and lights and different things like that. And I, I really like, um, to, um, explore that for Broadway, especially knowing that we've got, you know, two or three new businesses on Broadway currently. We've got a couple more coming up. I think for the safety and for what we're gonna continue to do in the future, uh, we need to take a look at that. And, um, so I, I, I know we're getting, that's part of CIP, but I wanted to just kinda talk and bring that up that I had talked with Lori and Chris.
Third, so I was glad with the Independence Project that, that, uh, there were several crosswalks, uh, looked at in that project because there are a lot, there's a lot of traffic in that inner corridor in town. And, and Scott and I just heard the other day of a situation on Seamer's Drive where a lot of university students are, will, will, will drive, it will take the, the bus out to like Target and they walk across Seamer's to go to Buffalo Wild Wings or go to, to shop somewhere else. And there's no crosswalk there. So that's, I mean, there, those things that come up just are, it's a safety thing and, and it's very easy to fix. And it's not real expensive to fix and it's something we need to look at a lot of different places. I would agree. Anything else? Nobody? Holy cow. I've got a few. Had the pleasure of, uh, attending the first Friday Coffee, which was not on the first Friday this month. It's the second Friday Coffee. Uh, but Sarah Stephens of the Seymour Council on the Arts gave a great presentation on their proposal to, uh, expand and utilize the upstairs at the Seymour Council on the Arts building out on Spanning Street. And it's, it's a great project and I hope that that comes to fruition because that'd be great for downtown and great for the community. Uh, I attended the developers' roundtable on the 15th and, and, uh, I heard a lot of positive things that have, that the city's done to, uh, with developers and, and work with them to make things easier. Uh, and there are still some issues with, with the same old issues that, you know, with, uh, number of parking spots or, uh, might be the way lighting is measured in a certain area. And, uh, you know, the whole, the whole thing with that is I think we need to realize that, that times have changed and we need to look at, at, at alternative ways to evaluate, say, a number of parking spaces because a lot of restaurants would deliver more than they have people that eat in. And, uh, it's just our society's changed, the way they, uh, you look at the number of meals, just one entity cargo delivery, uh, it's a lot. And those people aren't going out to restaurants anymore. They're, they're having food delivered. So, and I think the big thing I got out of that is that, that we as a council need to consider empowering our staff more to make some of those decisions so that, uh, they're practical and that we don't have to have a developer have to wait and come back to P and Z and, and do all those things for, for signs and for parking and for, uh, lighting or other things that, that are simple to fix without going through all the hoops. And they'd appreciate that. Uh, had a simple board meeting, uh, which is the Southeast Missouri Metropolitan Planning Organization, in case you didn't know what it was. Uh, we had a, we've had a, a lot of recent discussions on, on the proposed, uh, exit, they say Exit 99, I call it 100. Uh, the interchange between Cape and Jackson and that's, that is happening, uh, and will start this summer and last for a year and a half. Uh, so their MoDOT is doing things to, uh, help alleviate some of that and hopefully we'll have all of the work done on William to Gordonville done by then so that, that makes that easier. Also had a discussion on the future of Exit 93, uh, the south exit. Uh, there are some problems there with, uh, one of the bridges and it will be next on the agenda. Earl Norman and some other people that own land down there have had talks and MoDOT is work, working with all the property owners to identify the problems that exist there and, uh, ways to maybe connect 74 to get out of the floodplain to come straight into the city and basically do away with the bridges and have one big interchange. I don't know if that'll come to fruition or not, but it would really open up development and it'd be a lot easier for people to get in and out of our city from the south. So that's a, that's the next big thing on the agenda with MoDOT. Uh, attended the school board meeting on the 17th and, uh, when they approved the aquatics recommendation and put their issue on the, elected to a bond issue and, uh, that was exciting. Uh, I was, uh, asked to be with, uh, Mayor Jackson and Harry Rediger at Sportsplex last Saturday for the pickleball tournament, which was, uh, really, really a neat deal. It's a, it was a, uh, basically a fundraiser for, uh, Chris Brown and Jackson who has a, a brain tumor and it's for the research for glioblastoma. Uh, but pickleball is something that I, you know, I've been asked to play and I've never played it. And it's, uh, as you watch it, and I've seen people play it, it's, it's, uh, it's really kinda unique. And here's a sport that was invented in the mid to late 60s and it's the fastest growing sport in the United States. Uh, I have a good friend who moved to, uh, the villages in Florida a couple of years ago and I talked to him on the phone last week and I said something about going to this pickleball, they said, pickleball, they have 100 courts. 100 pickleball courts in the village. That's a lot of pickleball courts.
My father-in-law goes down there.
It's a, I mean, that's, I can't imagine. So don't be surprised if you as a council get bombarded by people in our community who are playing pickleball who want more
More space.
More space. You know, it's
Or court time.
No.
Right, don't say.
It's, it's a little different, but
Go to the Osage on like, what, July on Tuesdays or whenever?
Osage and Shawnee, though, we fill up, uh, now with a lot more pickleball.
Really?
And the demand is there. We don't rent those leagues, they come in.
And they rent the space, right. Wow. Now, does the city, do we have any, do we do any city pickleball yet?
They don't want us to organize.
They like to do their own thing.
Well, I've seen a ton at Osage, so.
I, uh, when I visit my sisters, even outside, down in their, on their, in their public parks, they have pickleball, you know, outside on their courts.
We do it arenas, well, courts down. Oh, okay, the lines are there, they're there, that's, uh, yeah, last summer was the first time I played in, um, Happy Sage, my best friend and I went there. So the thing is, it's one of those rare things that you can do as an adult and still do.
Well, and there's a lot of, you know, there's a, they call it what, dinkin? You know, there's, it's just a, there's just a, there's a, it's, it's subtle and there's just, you know, a lot of finesse with it, not, it's not like a power game like, you know, you're playing tennis, you wanna, you know, serve that thing across so the guy can't hit it. With pickleball, it's a, it's a, it's a little different and it's fun to watch and it looks like it'd be fun to play. All I need now, one more thing to do to throw in my schedule, my, my wife would love it, so start playing pickleball. Uh, had a magnet meeting this morning. It was a very good meeting. We reorganized, had two new board members. Uh, I do want to say it, uh, you know, I think we had a, a lot of good Martin Luther King celebrations around Cape Girardeau yesterday and I think they were well-attended. The, uh, annual Seymour Martin Luther King thing is Wednesday night. Uh, and not much else. Scott and I are meeting with the editorial board at the end of the month and, uh, anything else? Anybody else? We're to items for discussion in the P and Z report. Mr. Glenn. Glad to see you here.
And, uh, on pickleball, I will, I will share a personal experience, having been at the Osage and participated in pickleball. I don't know what was more impressive, the, the score that the, uh, 75-year-old wonderful lady beat me by or the sheer roasting of her trash talk while she was doing it. But, uh, I went one time.
You went one time? If I start playing, I want to play with you then.
The Planning and Zoning Commission met, uh, on January the 9th. It was a very short meeting. Uh, we only had a few items on the agenda. Uh, we did have our election of officers, uh, where the, uh, current offices were, officers were all elected to maintain their positions. Uh, Kevin Greaser is, uh, Secretary, Bruce Skinner is Vice Chairman and, and me as Chairman. And then we did not have any, uh, public hearings on the agenda. Uh, we did have, uh, three subdivision plats on the agenda. Uh, we approved by a vote of eight to zero with Mr. Greaser abstaining. We approved the Harvey Sherwood Extension Subdivision Record Plat. Uh, the Southeast Health West Campus, uh, Record Plat was tabled at the applicant's request, uh, and then we approved by an eight-zero vote with Mr. Greaser also abstaining on this one, the Liberty Subdivision Record Plat. And that's all the business we have before us, Betty.
Any questions?
I can answer any questions.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Are, are there any appearances this evening for anybody, any item not on the agenda this Any item that's not on the agenda? If not, we will go right into our agenda review.
We have no public appearance tonight. And, uh, our consent agenda is full of the items that, uh, were first read last meeting. Uh, number two is the, uh, agreement, uh, for the fire rescue. Three is the agreement for the snow removal equipment, uh, uh, vehicle. Uh, these are items where we had additional costs, we had to go back and get, uh, the amendment to the grant. Um, number four is, uh, the speed limit along Forest Avenue rung up there at old, uh, the old Notre Dame area. Uh, five is, um, uh, zoning change for Silver Springs Road. Uh, this was the Southeast Hospital Charlotte. Then there's the special use permit for the Cornelius's for the billboard along Business Park. Number seven is the Bluff City Beer, the special use permit for the vehicle body and paint shop, uh, that only is allowed under, in that area, in that zoning with a special use permit. So second, third reading of that. And then we have the second, third reading, the special tax bills for demolition of dangerous buildings. So that is the consent agenda. Are there any items that you'd like to remove or, um, show your, your vote as abstaining? Not have the three new
Not have three new ordinances tonight. The first one is appropriating funds from the special, from the general fund for 911 dispatch software. This is our existing dispatch, 911 dispatch software is becoming antiquated and is no longer being supported. So, that is a very troubling thing. You don't want to have calls, this routes the 911 calls to the proper place, and so, we made that a priority. We, we work with the county and Jackson in our PSAP, which is our 911 handling, and we all share in this and other softwares. And so, our portion of this will be $150,000. We get a little over 50% of the calls, so we're doing 50% of the, of the cost of that. The county and Jackson will split the other 50, 150,000. So, a critical item that we felt like was worthy of appropriating the funds out, off of our fund balance in order to do this work. So, that's what the fund balance is for, these type of things that come up that are just absolutely critical, and so, we have put that for the first reading tonight. We have already had discussions with the, the consultant who's doing our CAD software and adding this into that so that it can all be seamless. So, we're excited about that moving forward and feel like that's the best path to go on. Number 10 is the record plat for the Harvey Sherwood Extension that Mr. Glenn talked about, and then 11 is the general warranty deed for the properties for some floodlot areas with that. So, any questions on new ordinances? Not, number 12 is the appointments to the tree board. I think we have a couple of incumbents on that that look like they'll, that is a preference of the council, and so, you'll need a motion for that when the time comes. And then, we do have some closed-session items to do tonight. Thank you, Scott. At this time, we'll go into regular session. We'll have the roll call, please.
Mr. Essex?
Here.
And Dr. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Gard?
Here.
Mr. Gunn?
Here.
Ms. Kinder?
Here.
Ms. Moore? Mr. Presson?
Here.
I will entertain a motion to drop the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gunn, second by Mr. Gard. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no public hearings tonight. Is there anybody here tonight that have any comments on anything on the agenda? Not a lot of big things on here. No comments. If that being the case, I'll have Eric read the consent agenda.
Number 19 dash 02, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute amendment number two to the state block grant agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission to fund the acquisition of aircraft rescue firefighting vehicles at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. An ordinance authorizing city manager to execute amendment number two to the state block grant agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission to fund the acquisition of an aircraft rescue firefighting vehicle at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. From 19 dash 03, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute a state block grant agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for a snow removal equipment vehicle at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. An ordinance authorizing city manager to execute a state block grant agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for a snow removal equipment vehicle at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. On 19 dash 06, an ordinance meeting Schedule A of Section 26 dash 228 of the City Code by amending the speed limit along Ritter Drive and a portion of Forest Avenue in the state Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance meeting Schedule A of Section 26 dash 228 of the City Code by amending the speed limit along Ritter Drive and a portion of Forest Avenue in the state Cape Girardeau, Missouri. From 19 dash 07, an ordinance meeting Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, City Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of property located at 921 South Silver Springs Road in the city of County Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from R1 to C2. An ordinance meeting Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, City Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of property located along 921 South Silver Springs Road in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from R1 to C2. On 19 dash 08, an ordinance granting special use permits to Derek and Carla Cornelius for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a billboard at 3849 Business Park Place in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance granting special use permit to Derek and Carla Cornelius for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a billboard at 3849 Business Park Place in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. On 19 dash 09, an ordinance granting special use permit to Paul Bradley Russum and Buff City Beer Company for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a vehicle body and paint shop at 450 Seamer's Drive in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance granting special use permit to Paul Bradley Russum and Buff City Beer Company for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a vehicle body and paint shop at 450 Seamer's Drive in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. On 19 dash 10, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of special tax bills on properties for the demolition of dangerous buildings and for nuisance abatements under the provisions of Chapter 7 and Chapter 13 of the Code of Ordinances, City Cape Girardeau. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of special tax bills on properties for the demolition of dangerous buildings and for nuisance abatements under the provisions of Chapter 7 and Chapter 13 of the City, of the Code of Ordinances, of the City of Cape Girardeau.
You have before you the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Motion, motion by Mr. Gard, second by Ryan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You've passed the consent agenda. New ordinances. Bill number 19 dash 12, an ordinance appropriating money from the general fund to upgrade the current 911 dispatch software.
So moved.
Motion by Robbie, second by Shelley. Any discussion?
Does this approach need for emergency ordinance?
No, but I'm, they've already started the wheels turning to get it, get it going, so we're, the money needed to be appropriated will be on time, but thanks, thanks for asking.
Well, it's something that's really, really needed. I mean, if somebody dials 911, you want to be able to get through to somebody, and they need to know where you're at, and that's very, very important, so we gotta have it. Gotta have this.
I mean, so what's the lifespan of this type of software? 10 years?
I, I would assume, I don't know how long the existing has been there.
I mean, I know technology's changing all the time, and, you know, I mean, when we, my business, when we implement new, that's one of the questions we ask, because you're like, you know, you want to at least get a picture of when you could start planning to have to
That's a great question.
Yeah, typically, from my experience, and I don't know on this particular software, but a seven to 10-year lifespan is, is kinda the average on whole safety softwares.
At the same time, though, there are updates that occur periodically, too, to keep it upgraded and
Sure. Yeah, I know, just technology tends to, you know, after a period of time, it tends to, to outrun the capabilities of software, and I just didn't know. I mean, I know in my business, it's about 10 years, but I know others is, you know, a little bit different, just curious. Thank you.
But still, sorely needed.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 19 dash 13, an ordinance approving the record plat of Harvey Sherwood Extension Subdivision.
So moved.
Motion by Robbie, seconded by Ryan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 19 dash 14, an ordinance accepting, ordinance accepting a general warranty deed from Wright Properties 3 LLC and Wright Properties 4 LLC for property located at 1207 North Main Street and 11003 North Fountain Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
So moved.
Motion by Dan, do I hear a second? Second by Shelley. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say, this is great to see this on here. These properties have been a nice work to the neighborhood. They've been flooded, one of them's been heartbroken. It's nice to see these finally, you know, moving towards good health here.
Good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Robert Harris and Sven Svensson to be reappointed to the tree advisory board.
So moved.
Motion by Dan, seconded by Shelley. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from regular session and to convene to closed session for legal actions, litigation, and confidential communications with legal counsel, personnel matters, and leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate pursuant to revise Missouri Section 61002, 1, 1 and 3.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gard, seconded by Shelley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will adjourn to closed session.